All right, welcome everybody. Apologize for being a few minutes late, but I'll call to order the City Council Business Meeting for the City of Arvada for March 21st, 2022. At this time, I'll call on Councilmember Simpson for a moment of reflection and Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me for a moment of quiet reflection. And now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ms. Rush, could you call the roll call, please?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Merkman.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Pfeifer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams and Councilmember Smith from tonight's business meeting as they're out of town.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All votes are cast with a vote of five to zero with Mr. Marriott being remote and Mayor Williams and Ms. Smith excused absence this evening.
Mayor Protem, can I make another motion real quick?
Sure.
I'd like to move to remove Resolution B1, Resolution 22021, Resolution authorizing the naming of the city park located at Garrison Street between Ralston Road and West 57th Avenue, quote, "The Garrison Street Paseo," be removed from tonight's agenda.
All right, thank you. Let me push the right button here. So removing Resolution 22-021 as a resolution from the consent, well, it's a resolution. Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes five to one with Mayor Williams and Councilmember Smith being absent. So we'll take that on another day. We'll look to the team to reschedule that. Thank you very much. Presented before you are the minutes for the City Council Business Meeting dated March 7th, 2022. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, those minutes will stand as presented. Next, we don't have any recognitions or communications or presentations tonight, so we'll move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. And as a reminder, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to your City Council. There will be a three-minute limit per person. We always listen carefully to what you have to say, but we do not respond to your comments during the meeting. We'll refer any issues or feedback to our city team, and one of our city team will follow up with you if there is a need for that follow-up. So I've got a few that have signed up for comment tonight. Mr. Wayne Westover, if you could come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Wayne Westover. I'm a resident of Arvada. I live in Lake Arbor, 8255 Salisbury Court. The reason I'm here today is I'm a parent of four young boys who race BMX. BMX is not exactly the most common sport in the United States, but it is the fastest-growing sport among youth participants in the United States right now. There used to be a BMX track here. It was called Sky High BMX. I think it, they removed the track in 2011, if I remember correctly, and the, there were talks of moving the BMX track to another location, and nothing has happened since then, and maybe because people haven't been interested in it or not. But regardless of the fact, we do have a lot of interested people that would like to start racing BMX again here in the City of Arvada. I am the president of a nonprofit group that is called Colorado BMX Initiative, and we have the equipment and the, everything that is needed to get the BMX track started and off the ground. The only thing that we ask is that we have a location within the city, the city, that the city approves, so. I don't, I'm petting your questions, I don't have anything else.
No, thank you for your comments, and we'll, we'll have a member of our team get back with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Dan Ringsby, and I've been a resident of Arvada since 1987 when my wife and I moved here from Boulder. With the influx of people crossing our southern border, and I have absolutely no problem with people coming to America to better their lives, I just would ask that they do it legally. But it's not happening that way as consistently as I would like to see, as well as maybe less-than-desirable, law-abiding people crossing, and us not knowing where they are or where they might end up. I was curious if there was any plan from the city to help protect our citizens from potential violence or more drug influx. And I, I love our men and women in blue, and I support them wholeheartedly, and I pray that God blesses each and every one of them, keeps them safe. So that's my comment, and I'd like to finish by praying for our council members. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with nothing but love in our hearts for you. I am grateful to you for the people in this room, and I'm very grateful that you have allowed them to be put into place to protect our citizens of Arvada and to do what is right in their eyes, to make the city safer and a better place to live and to be prosperous for everybody involved. I ask that you would give them wisdom and that they would hear that still, small voice that you give everybody. And I'm thankful for the work that Jesus Christ did on the cross for my sins, and it's in His name that I pray. Thank you, Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments about our police force, and we feel the very same way. Ms. Rush, do we have anybody signed up for public comment on Zoom?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. First item, R22-019, a resolution authorizing a first amendment to an agreement buy-in between the City of Arvada and SEMA Construction, Inc., for the construction manager slash general contractor, GM slash GC, pre-construction phase services in an amount not to exceed $212,000. And finally, R22-020, a resolution authorizing a change order number four to an agreement buy-in between the City of Arvada and Mueller Engineering Company, Inc., to change the scope of work and increase the contract amount by $444,759. Mr. Pfeifer?
I'd like to move that consent agenda items, R22-019 through R22-020 be approved.
Thank you. Motion for approval. Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And consent agenda passes five to zero with Mayor Williams and Ms. Smith being absent. Mr. Pfeifer moved to remove the Resolution 22-021 from the agenda tonight, so we will move on to our ordinances. First reading, we do have one ordinance on first reading, I believe. Let me make sure I've got my, yeah, too many pieces of paper up here. Mr. Pfeifer?
Do you want me to do the?
Would you, please?
I sure can, Mayor Protem. Council Bill 22-047, an ordinance amending Article 4, Division 1, Sections 154 and 162, and Article 6, Sections 213 and 214 of Chapter 54, Motor Vehicle and Traffic, of the Arvada City Code. Public hearing to be set for April 4, 2022 at 6:15 PM.
Thank you.
Did I need correction?
Be approved on first reading.
Oh, be approved on first reading. Sorry, I didn't go to the actual reading. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
Yes.
All votes are cast, and that passes five to one with Mayor Williams and Ms. Smith being absent.
Corrections, it's five to zero.
What did I say?
Five to one.
I.
I'll tell the mayor you dissented.
I, that's right, five to zero. Thank you for the correction. I did that a couple of weeks ago as well. All right. So it is past 6:15, so we can move on to the public, to our public hearing. So I'll open the hearing for Council Bill 22-045, an ordinance authorizing a loan agreement between the City of Arvada and the Urban Renewal Authority to support redevelopment projects in Ralston Fields Urban Renewal Area, Ordinance Number 4792. Mr. Devon?
Yes. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, before you tonight is an ordinance that would, if approved, allow a loan agreement between the city and the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority. The Ralston Fields Urban Renewal Area expires in 2028, and the authority is looking to complete several projects in the next few years. Some of these projects include the Ralston Commons, the Berkeley Homes, the Paseo redevelopment of Kmart, Ralston Gardens, and the Paseo Place Apartments. In order to allow these projects to go forward, Ora is seeking a loan of $8 million from the city. The terms of the loan would include 3% interest, which would be paid back over a three-year period starting in 2023. This loan would enable Ora to complete the construction of these, of these projects. What I would want to point out is that we have had a history of working with the Urban Renewal Authority on these kinds of financial arrangements. In this case, the city will receive 3% interest on this investment, which is greater than the current 1.6% that's generated through our short-term cash investments. The payment schedule would begin with a payment in 2023 of $2 million, payment in 2024, $3 million, and a final payment of $3,530,000 in 2025. The, our finance team has evaluated this proposal and concluded that it is mutually beneficial for the city and Ora. We have Finance Director here, Brian Archer, who can elaborate that on, elaborate more on that if you have questions for him. As we've said, we've done this in the past with, with other loans with Ora. There's some more details regarding each of the projects that I mentioned within the background section of the council report, and as a result, we are recommending approval of the ordinance. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Open public comment portion of this hearing. Anyone in council chambers wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, do we have any on Zoom? Okay, well, I'll close the public comment portion of this part of the hearing and open it up for council member questions or action. John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, one question for either Mr. Archer or Mr. Devon, and that would be, what's the source of the $8 million funds from the city?
I'll take that. Councilmember Marriott, the source is general fund reserves, and so we will build this into our tenure model. So it'll be the reserves that are currently sitting there today, and then added back over the three-year period.
Okay, thanks. And one last question is, are these funds secure, are these loans secured with any title or mortgage to anything, or is this just an unsecured loan to our Urban Renewal Authority?
It's an unsecured loan between the city and the Urban Renewal Authority.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott. Any other council comments or action? Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion if there are no other questions.
I don't see any.
Perfect. I move that CB22-045, an ordinance authorizing a loan agreement between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority to support redevelopment projects in the Ralston Fields Urban Renewal Area, be approved on final reading, Number 4792, an order published by Title Only.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll be voting in favor this evening, but I do want to raise a concern as we continue to work with R on future projects, and that is that I'm disappointed in the amount of affordable housing that's in these projects. And I know that's come up before in conversation, but I just wanted to express that and hope that we, as a city, in our partnership of the work, can, can do more in that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon, if you could cast your vote.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a comment too before I vote, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
So I'll also be supporting this. I think normally I would have difficulty with an unsecured note like this. However, I believe the trajectory of our renewal authority is such that they will have absolutely no problem making this repayment and facilitating development at this time is absolutely the right thing to do, and particularly our fund reserves are ample to be able to do this without putting anything else in danger. So I'll be in support of it as well.
Thank you very much. So with that, all votes are cast, and that passes five to one, I'm sorry, I did it again, five to zero. I don't know why I keep saying one. Five to zero with Mayor Williams and Ms. Smith being absent. Thank you. Next item for public hearing is Council Bill 22-046, an ordinance amending the land development code of the City of Arvada, for the City of Arvada Code, Ordinance Number 4793. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. We'll have Ryan Stachowski begin this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. We're here tonight to present several changes, what we consider to be minor in nature, to the land development code. These changes represent the original intent when the code was adopted in May of 2020. However, I, we, after we've used the code for now almost two years, we believe that some clarity in the language is necessary. So really, the focus of tonight's recommended changes are related to making sure that we were clear in the original intent. There are 24 items that are listed in the packet in the staff report, and as I mentioned, they're relatively perceived to be minor in nature. We did present these to council at a workshop on September 13th, and then again on December, September 13th, and then again on December 13th, in which times, at that time, council was supportive of these changes. There were several other items during those discussions that council wanted to have more discussion on. We do have an additional workshop scheduled for April 11th, when we'll discuss those. Those items specifically are notice distance requirements, meaning giving more notice to people for different projects in, for a larger radius, the definition of fleet, the definition of truck trips and what that means, and defining the amount of truck trips that are appropriate in zone districts, criteria for conditional use permits, PUDs, and the appeals process are all things that we are planning to discuss with council at the April 11th. So those are not part of the package tonight. We did have a conversation with a planning commission about these items, and Planning Commission was supportive of all of the changes except for one. They made a recommendation that in the short-term rental ordinance, that we hold that over to the workshop and also discuss it. Their specific concern was related to the language around the notice requirements for if, if the director has the ability to go in and inspect a short-term rental, and there's no specific notice requirements within the short-term rental ordinance. So that was something that was identified as a cause for concern. And then they also wanted a little bit of additional clarity around the responsible party. If council remembers, there is a provision in the short-term rental ordinance that basically says our, our code enforcement or our police department needs to have somebody who's available to them within an hour's timeframe, should there be an issue with the short-term rental that they can contact. And they wanted more clarity about who that person is. Is it the same person all the time, or can it be, you know, somebody goes out of town and somebody else is replacing it? Can be an agency that's the responsible party, those types of things. So they, the Planning Commission recommended that we bring those items forward to council as part of a workshop as opposed to approving them tonight. I will tell you that the changes that we are proposing as part of the short-term rental are not material changing any of the items that are in there. We've readjusted the language a little bit and organized it. We put some headers on it, but fundamentally, we are not making any substantive changes to the short-term rental ordinances. So this comment from the Planning Commission came a little bit outside of any scope that we were intending to change, but that was their kind of sole comment relative to this slate. I shouldn't call it a slate, but these individual items. And so we wanted to make sure that we represented what their concerns were fairly. We, we've gone over these in PowerPoints at the meetings that I said before and workshops. We have that PowerPoint again, and we can go over any one of these items in detail, and we're happy to do it. Rob is here with the PowerPoint at the ready, but we didn't also want to just go through it if council felt it was, that they were up to speed on these different things. So when it's the appropriate time, we can either walk through the presentation, or we can skip to specific items that council may want to discuss based on public comment or any of your own questions. I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Well, why don't I open it up to public comment first, and then we'll possibly move to that stage of the, of the conversation. So open it up to public comment if there's anyone in council chambers that would like to address council.
My name's Gina Halcy. I live at 14626 West 68th Place in Arvada, and I'm here as a homeowner and also as a board member for the Ralston Valley Coalition. And we just had a couple of things on these, this slate, if you will, that we wanted to have explained at the meeting. So we thought this would be good because it'll be public and it'll be out there for everybody to, to hear. So there was one thing, Table 2-1-6-2A, the outdoor storage for IL. I'm assuming explain, I would like you to explain what 35% of lot area means. I'm thinking that means take away all the buildings and what's left is 35% of that. So maybe if you can explain that. And then also on your items, number 20, the Table 8-2-2-2A, the director discretion regarding notice requirements in neighborhood meetings, and to indicate that public meetings is not required for specific application types. I think it would be helpful if you could explain exactly what that means for the public. And then, you know, because that's not the norm. The process is, this is the process, and that's how it's always been. So if you're going to change that, it's not the norm. I think people need to know why. And then number 21, if you can explain and give some examples of what would be a minor defect, and that's kind of discretionary as well, so I'd like to find out, how do you decide that? And number 22, if you can explain what notice of administrative decision is, a little more detail on that. And then we'd also like to know the schedule for the major changes to be heard by council. So if you could hopefully list, give us the dates of those workshops and Planning Commission and council. And that's basically all I had to, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you very much.
Something to talk about.
Perfect, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing, oh, Ms. Rush, do we have anybody on it? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and open it up for council comments and questions, but Mr. Stachowski? Sorry, Brian. Do you want to address those questions?
If you'd like us to, we're happy to.
I think that would probably be good for all of us.
Sure.
The first one was related to area for outside storage, meaning 35%. So what is 35% of outside storage area? We take that at 35% of the land area. So if you had something that was 10,000 square feet, 35% would be 3,500 square feet, and that's 35%. So we're not subtracting out buildings or roads or anything like that. We're taking the, the lot size, and it's 35% of that. Yep. There, there are, so that's for outside storage. We do landscaping areas the same way we do, so each one of those percentages are based off of the entire lot size.
Okay. So if, maybe what we'll do is have, have you go through kind of all of those, and then open it up to council questions for clarity on, on any of that that they have, if that works for you.
Yes. Next, it's related to Section 20, or Section 20, excuse me, it's item number 20 in it, and I believe that this is the one for, my, the 21. So regarding notice requirements for, for public hearings. So this is, to add the director's discretion regarding notice requirements for neighborhood meetings of public hearings. So there are, right now, our code requires that we provide notices for public hearings for all sorts of, of different cases. And there are times when it is onerous to a property owner to say, this is such a minor thing, is it appropriate for that to go to a neighborhood meeting? So the, we've, we've not done this before because it's not been part of our code. But the example that we have been using is, you'll recall that about a month, maybe two months ago, you all had a major modification for a fence for, to go from four feet to six feet along Sim Street, in which there was a six-foot cent, a six-foot fence on one side, a six-foot fence on the other, and because of the orientation of this person's house, they were then, that was their front setback as opposed to the side setback that was on the neighboring houses, and therefore it required them to have a neighborhood meeting because they were going to a public hearing. This is one where, when we had the neighborhood meeting, all the neighbors came up and said, why are we having a neighborhood meeting about this? And that when we came to council, the council's comments in general were, this is a minor thing, this isn't that big a deal, we, we shouldn't need to put our homeowners through as, as much as this. So that's an example of where it would be a minor within the director's discretion to say, listen, this is a little bit of a no-brainer, we see exactly what's going on here, this makes sense, and we don't want to have to do the extra, the step. We believe, as a city team, in more communication to the neighborhood, because if you're having communication at the end of the process for the first time, that's a no-win situation for anybody. So this is not discretion that anybody wants to, you know, say, well, we're, we're going to use this left and right because it makes sense and, and we want to make this easier. This is to kind of shore up some extreme examples in which it's clear and obvious, hopefully, to anybody that's looking at it, that this is a minor thing, and therefore we can waive this provision. But I would say on the whole, 99% of the time, this would not be used because we are huge believers in wanting to make sure people are aware of what's going on around them ahead of time. But we also don't want to raise flags for things that are really minor in nature. That, that is our explanation on that provision.
Thank you.
But does that also apply when we have maybe something that might be more controversial, that you'll expand the notice area?
So.
Or we're going to limit that through a different process?
Well, so there's two things on that. Number one, at the April 11th meeting, we are going to be talking about expanding the notice requirements, and, and. And let's also, there's a difference between a neighborhood meeting and a notice requirement. So we do notice requirements for administrative cases and all those things, and we're talking on April 11th about expanding that notice. There are times when things are controversial that a neighborhood meeting is not required. However, I have required them because I knew that they were controversial, and I wanted more community input at the beginning stages. And a current development case going on right now is a good example of that. So there are times where we provide more notice and have more neighborhood meetings when they're not even required.
Thank you. So the example that you gave, which I recall, the fence example, and you stated that the, you know, it was a minor modification, and therefore, in this case, we would be changing it so that you wouldn't have to have the neighborhood meeting, is what I understand. And, but when we had that conversation, I think it started really with, we've, on council having the conversation, that it didn't require the public hearing. And so what I heard you say kind of caught me was that if it's, if, you know, if it's going to require a public hearing, it seems to me, then it should require the neighborhood meeting automatically. And where the minor modification question comes in is more about the public hearing piece. Do I have that correct, or am I confusing things?
Well, it wasn't a minor modification. It was a major modification, which is what required the public hearing. Because it was a larger deviation from the standard, more than 20%, that's what required the public hearing. The question is, is the request of the major modification of such a magnitude that it would require a neighborhood meeting? And I think that that's the question in front of you all tonight, is are there major modifications that can be insignificant enough that would not rise to the level of needing a neighborhood meeting?
Right. And I guess I'm still going back to, I'm feeling like the decision point on whether there's a neighborhood meeting or not, I feel like should be on whether it's a, it's requiring a public hearing. And then that should, it seems like a neighborhood meeting should automatically occur, then there shouldn't be a judgment factor in there on whether you're going to have the neighborhood meeting or not. And I think when it comes to a, you know, the question of, does this rise to the level of having a public hearing or not, then let's have that conversation. But I'm questioning whether we are making the change here at the right point.
Sure. It's completely, it's completely within council's discretion if they say, based on your comments there, to say, if we're going to have a public hearing, I want to have a neighborhood meeting. And that is no problem. We wanted to be responsive to the comments that we thought we heard about certain things being not significant in nature and how it might be onerous. But again, that is within council's discretion to say, if it has a public hearing, then it should have a neighborhood meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Mayor Pertim. So I guess I do this a little bit differently. Historically, we've had a number of things in Arvada that at one time, we had a Board of Adjustment that handled things. And this case we're talking about with the fence would have been one that previously could have gone to the Board of Adjustment. And that in the previous, to take a case to the Board of Adjustment, didn't require a meeting, we have required notice, and it required a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment. And so this is really just, I think, putting those particular type of cases that may have at one time been before the Board of Adjustment, and now because of the new land development code end up in front of council, putting them back on a similar footing to they would have had in the past with the Board of Adjustment. My experience with the Board of Adjustment was that there was, there's plenty of notice and plenty of due process. I'm not uncomfortable with that at all because these are small cases. They're like the size of a fence or the setback of a carport or, you know, any number of things like that. And so I would tend to, you know, I would, I guess I'd want to ask the Community Development Director if my summation there about this being, kind of covering some of those things that previously the Board of Adjustment might have done.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer, did you have? Okay. Okay, sorry. All right. So I think we've cleared the questions on that particular issue.
On that issue, and I have a couple more that were asked.
Yep.
One was related to minor defects. So allowing for more flexibility in determining what constitutes a minor defect in a public hearing notice. So this is not a, at the discretion of the director. It's at the discretion of the Planning Commission or the City Council. And so as you all are very familiar with, there's three types of notice requirements for public hearing. There's the sign with the posting log, there's the notice in the newspaper, and then there's the mailing affidavit that says everybody within a certain radius got the notification of the public hearing. A minor defect could be, and Rob, maybe you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say that you had an address on Old Wadsworth Boulevard, and you put 7,500 Wadsworth Boulevard as opposed to Old Wadsworth Boulevard, or you left an S off at the end, or you transposed a 27 to a 72 or something like that. And the sign was there, and the notice went out, but the printing in the newspaper was wrong. So two of them were correct, one of them was wrong, something like that. Our code right now is strict in saying, if anything's wrong, then that neighborhood, or then that doesn't count, and it needs to go continue on. The language that's being proposed is the language that was in our previous code. So we didn't, we didn't carry that forward. We made it more strict in the code that we have now. And we've seen by doing that, we're so strict that we don't have that gray area for Planning Commission and City Council to say, listen, clearly, the notice got out, people heard about it, and this defect was of such a minor thing that it didn't prevent citizens that wanted to come in and talk about a project to be able to come in and do that. So that's what this addresses.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. So Ryan, just to clarify, what was our reasoning behind making it more strict? And perhaps now we've made it too strict, but my thought is, is there a happy medium ground? Why did we change it if it was working?
I'm going to let Rob Spontani answer that question.
Yay, Rob.
At the time, we looked at that provision. It was pulled in by our consultant at the time from another code. We looked at it, you know, didn't spend too much time on it. It didn't really come to light until we had actually enacted the code that it was too strict. I think from a legal perspective, they can also talk about the instance where we had to continue a case where, you know, during the pandemic, we were going back and forth between virtual and in-person. And we actually had a case, I can't remember which way it was, but the notice went out one way, the meeting was held another, and we had to postpone that case for that reason. So there are a number of different reasons to do it. But in all honesty, in about seven years that I've been here, I can only think of two or three times where it's ever become an issue.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm generally fine with moving it back to the way it was if it's not a problem. My one thing is actually that case, I could be mistaken, but I think it was the Ralston Valley Coalition that that case happened to. And for any, no, it wasn't? Okay, then I'm completely wrong, and I apologize. I'm trying to remember what case that was because I do kind of remember when the wrong Zoom link went out. However, it would be good if the notice goes out incorrectly to always make sure that we postponed those. We want to make sure that the citizens have the right information wherever they're getting it from.
And to be clear, that's City Council's decision or the Planning Commission's decision, not staff's decision.
Okay. I think we've cleared questions on that particular question.
Okay. The last one was about an administrative notice of decision. So right now, the way that we do notices is that if there is an administrative case at the beginning of the case, and this is new to the code, the 2020 code, if there's administrative case, then we require the developer to send out a notice of administrative case. So just review. So we send that out to the current notice requirement, which is 500 feet. And that's just something that we did because we wanted people to know what was going on. And though it was being reviewed administratively, we wanted people to be able to have the opportunity to comment while it went through that process. Without that administrative awareness, then people may find out about it after it was approved, which we didn't feel was in the best interest of the community. And so now we're getting to the point, and it dovetails a little bit into our discussion that'll happen on April 11th relative to appeals. And the appeals process currently is that you would bring an appeal forward, a person withstanding, either the developer who didn't like the decision, or the neighborhood group that wanted a different decision, and they would review that in a non-denovo case. So meaning no new evidence. And Rachel's going to correct me if I'm using any of these fancy words wrong. But, and it would be no new evidence, so it'd be non-denovo. It means that all of the evidence that council needs to consider during that appeals has to be presented before, or to the same decision maker, the director, prior to making that decision. What this provision does is it says, okay, we, the city is about to make a decision on a given case. And so prior to making that decision, we would require the developer to send out a notice and say, the reviews are done. And the final, the final plan is in front of the Community Development Director. But before he or she makes their decision, we are asking for one final round of comments from the community in order to weigh in on the final plan. Because there are times that the community is weighing in on the process. Maybe it's gone through one round, maybe it's gone through two rounds. The neighborhood meetings are before the first submittal. So what this does is it gives everybody notice at the end that a decision is being made. It also alerts them because a decision is being made, that should they object to the decision in some way, then that starts the process of appeal. Or it gives them the timeframe of when they can start an appeals process. So this is giving more notice to the community so that they are aware, not only to comment on the last iteration of the plan, that maybe their comment got addressed, and it's a good thing, and they're happy with it. Maybe it didn't get addressed, and they want to make their comment again. And it also makes them aware that because that decision is made, now they have a ticking clock to when they can file an appeal. So this is providing more notice to the community at a decision point.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions on anything that has just been presented? Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, Ryan. So I actually really like this idea. I think it's great to give a final notice. As you know, as you well noted, a lot of people weigh in during the iteration of the process, and they may not have been aware of a final draft. And so I think it really helps to update what people's expectations are. Because if they see groundbreaking, they might still think it's Plan 1 or Plan 2 and be upset about that. I realize these are the final plans, but just to confirm, if there is one last tweak that the community seems to be calling for, can that be made at that time? Would you require that as part of the condition of approval?
Yes. So we take community comments very seriously, and we're asking for them because if there's something that we can ask the developer to address, and it would mitigate something that's in the criteria and make the project better, we would certainly tell them to do that.
Perfect. Thank you, Ryan, and really liked this one. Thanks.
Great.
Mr. Marriott, I want to make sure that you've had a chance to speak if you have any questions.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Just one final question, which was if you could speak to the schedule after April 11th.
Well, to be perfectly honest, we don't have a schedule after April 11th because we want to get through April 11th. So it's going to be based on what is the direction that we receive from City Council. And then you guys have a very busy calendar, and we want to make sure that we're fitting things in appropriately. So we'll have to take a look at what the council calendar, the Planning Commission calendar is going on beyond that. But to be perfectly frank, we have not planned for any dates after April 11th. We're waiting for direction then.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor Pertim. I just have a technical question. Can you explain for me, we're striking urban type under the housing palette of residential six lot. Can you explain to me the difference there between urban type and suburban type town homes?
So the suburban type is more kind of the front-loaded. You might have a driveway off the street to the product. It's also a wider product. It means it's, in all practicality, a lower-density type of development. The urban allows for alley access. It allows for a narrower unit, which because of that can increase the density. And we removed it from the R6 just because that was supposed to be a more suburban district, and that was an error to bring the urban form into that. In that instance, it really doesn't make a huge difference in the density because the density is still capped. But it just didn't make sense to have an urban product type in a district that we're calling suburban.
And there's no limits then on number of stories related to that?
There is a height limit, so it would be a 35-foot height limit, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any more questions. Is there any member of council that would like to take action? Mr. Pfeifer.
So just point of clarification, there was a separate vote on removing some of that discussion, right? From the Planning Commission, they took a separate vote to remove Section 31534 additional workshop.
That is correct.
So when I made my motion, I'm assuming that's taken out then?
Well, it depends on what motion you make.
Well, the motion is that if we want to approve the motion that they presented, but they took a separate vote after that, which is out of order, I would think.
Well, I think the, our recommended motion is taking all of it. That's the suggested motion. Then the alternative motion is motioning on everything except that, and then taking that to a workshop. If you'd like to see those from a workshop, we can separate that out. Sorry.
So you're, so, okay. Yeah, I think the Planning Commission was out of order when they're voting. They shouldn't have voted to approve everything and then turned around and did a separate vote to remove something that they just approved.
They approved everything except for two items, and then they handled those two items separately. So their original motion was everything except for short-term rentals and then a notice requirement.
And that's not what the notes say, though. The notes say, in a separate vote of three to two, two being absent, the commission recommended that City Council further study the proposed changes to Section 3153 at a workshop before making any changes. So that was said in a separate vote that was after the initial vote, which included that. Something's out of order.
Let me look at your notes.
Because the first one, the Planning Commission reviewed and proposed amendments during the public hearing of March 8, 2022. The commission voted to recommend approval of the amendments to the City Council in a three-two, two-absent vote. In a separate vote, which means after the initial vote.
Yep.
There's a three-two, two-absent. Commission recommended that City Council further study Sections 3153 at a workshop. So was 3153 not in the original vote?
Right.
It's not what the notes say.
Okay. I believe you.
So can we get clarity from?
For us not being there, I worry about that.
Can we get clarity from council on exactly how the motion should be read tonight?
So I'm looking at the language, the suggestion motion under this particular agenda item. And it does just refer to approving the ordinance, the council bill, in its entirety. So it doesn't state that we, or that you are approving only what Planning Commission recommended. So we can go back and check those notes, Councilmember Pfeifer, and just make sure that we understand what went on at a Planning Commission level. However, either way, I think we're fine with council taking the action that it wants to take tonight because ultimately, the decision coming from Planning Commission is a recommendation only. So it's not an official action such that I would be concerned about the procedural irregularities.
So with that?
I don't feel comfortable making the motion. It's not what the notes say. And since we're not at planning commission, I don't know what you're telling me, what the notes that are published tells me. Because if the planning commission recommends that we withdraw that, that, I'm now hearing that staff is not recommending that we withdraw that. Because in your recommended motion, you do not say anything about their motion to us about removing that section.
So the, within your packet, it says, Planning Commission, March 8, 2022, LDC synopsis. On page four, at the bottom, is their actual motion.
I'd like a few minutes to review all the notes more clearly. I, I think what's in your executive summary is out of order. Something's not right. And so I want to take a few minutes to digest that whole section. So if you don't mind, Mayor, can we take a?
We'll take a five-minute recess?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer? Do you want to leave off, do you want to lead off the discussion?
Lead off, and then maybe we can triangulate what's happening. So let me go back to, and maybe the team here can help us. The first motion that was, that was presented by the planning commission was the move, that moved by Mr. Knapp, that an ordinance to amend the land development code of the city of Arvada be recommended to city council for approval with the addition amendment that Section 822A that dealt with the notice requirement and neighborhood meetings. And the Second Amendment 3513 dealing with short-term rental be excluded from the list of recommended changes from land development code. But then they followed up with a second motion. I'm just going to talk out loud for the team here. That said it was moved by Mr. Knapp that Sections 3513 of the planning, our land development code of the proposed language be excluded from being presented to the city council for approval. Then there was a third emotion, third motion on 8222A, which was a recommendation of changes of the LDC that have been presented to planning commission tonight and submit to the city council in the form of a workshop. So, and that was, that was on that one, but that was, that was, that, that failed. And then there was another motion, that 822A, again, be included in the packet of the changes that have been proposed to staff by planning commission tonight for the review, to be included for the positions, discussion, and then it passed. So I am suspecting the motion is really what they, what they motioned for, right? Did I get that right? Because our proposed motion does not say this.
No. All our, there, in the packet, there's an alternative motion that says, not the three motions, it just says, because where they landed at the end of those four motions was to include everything that the staff was including with the exception of short-term rentals. So you have two motions in your packet. One is to accept everything, and one is an alternative, which is to accept everything except for short-term rentals and ask that go to a workshop, which is the planning commission's ultimate recommendation.
I'm sorry, I do not see the alternate motion.
It's on the?
It's above the suggested motion.
The recommended action, and I have alternate course of action.
Alternative course of action.
So, but that's not a motion. That's just an action that, that took place, so.
It's an alternative course of action.
I'm sorry, team, but this one was not well, well done. I, I struggle with point of order and with how this is presented in front of us, the motion. I mean, I could try to stumble through the motion and try to match what, what they, what they, what they said.
Before you, before you try to do that, Mr. Marriott, did you have a question?
Yeah, if, if, if it's my turn on the floor, I would be happy to make a motion if my fellow council members are amenable.
Hold for a minute.
Sure.
Any other discussion?
No, I think we'll wait to see what the motion is, and then we'll know if it passes or fails.
Okay. So, Mr. Marriott, proceed with your motion.
Thank you. I move the council bill 22-046, an ordinance amending the land development code of the city of Arvada code be approved on final reading, number 4793, ordered, published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission, but not following exactly the recommendation of the, of the planning commission. So let me make a comment on my motion, why I made it, and how I'm going to vote. So, planning commission is advisory to us on questions like this. They have given us advice to, to accept all these things except for one thing, which their advice is to remove one section and hold, and suggest that the council hold a workshop on it. I have looked at that section extensively and don't feel any need for it to be removed and placed on a workshop agenda. So for me, I'm completely fine with all of these various actions to address our land development code. And, and then taking, you know, the recommendation of the planning commission, with the exception of removing this section on short-term rentals in, in consideration as I make this motion. And so for that reason, I'll be voting for my motion.
All right. Motion's, as Mr. Marriott has so eloquently described. Ms. Simpson?
Can we do friendly amendments?
Tell, tell me what it is, and I will let you know whether I will accept it as a friendly amendment or not.
I would like to move that we adopt the recommendation of the planning commission and remove, and pass the adjustments to the land development code, code with the removal of the update to the short-term rental, rentals for further discussion, because I would like to know what their thinking is. I would like to know why they recommended this.
So I'm not prepared to accept that as a friendly amendment. However, if you want to propose it as an amendment that we vote on, that's, that would be fine.
I would like to propose an amendment to the motion that we could vote on. I would like to propose that we adopt the recommendation of the planning commission for further discussion on short-term rentals by removing that section and approving the remainder of the ordinances.
All right. So I'm not going to try and repeat that. So we're moving, we're moving on the, on your amendment to accept the planning commission's proposal to remove the short-term housing?
Short-term rental.
Sorry. Short-term rental discussion. Okay. All votes are cast. Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
No.
And that passes three to two with, with myself and Mr. Marriott voting no. So, and Mayor, Mayor Williams and Ms. Smith being absent. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. So now we're back, so the original, so now we're back to an original motion.
The original motion with the amendment.
Correct.
That's what we're voting on now.
Right.
The amendment's part of it, so.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor Pertim. I, I'll be voting yes, but I am, I am concerned about the neighborhood notice and just want to make sure that that is used judiciously by staff. And we'll be paying close attention to that and seeing if we need to revisit that. So, thank you.
So, just for clarity, can we clarify the motion, please?
Yes. I believe what you're voting on now is to pass council bill 22046, an ordinance amending the land development code of the city of Arvada code, with the alteration recommended by the planning commission, which is to remove this section on short-term rentals, and discuss that later as part of a workshop in front of council.
Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
I vote no.
All votes are cast with four yeses and one no, with Mayor Williams and Ms. Smith being absent. Well, that was fun.
Got to marry your money.
That's right. Okay. Well, I think that was our last public comment for the evening. We'll open up now public comment, our second public comment portion. Anyone from the public in council chambers? Seeing none, we'll close the second public comment portion and open it up for council Mr. Pfeiffer?
I just wanted to, I know Lisa wasn't able to make, but had the innovation committee meeting. It was, it's probably known as the smart cities, but we kind of changed it to be more innovation than just technology. I, I don't want to spoil Don's opportunity to share, but some great movement around the public work side on how to work smarter, not harder. And it's not always technology-based, but just a way of doing things better and, and more streamlined and using data-driven decision-making. And I won't add more to that, but the innovation committee is really kind of looking at how we can look at different groups doing different things a little bit, a little bit smarter. And I know, I know Rachel's done a, done something recently with dashboarding. So it's just different ways of looking how we do our business. And I appreciate Craig's push on getting people to think outside the box and doing business a little bit differently. And, and I'd love to tell you all the fun stuff that Don shared with me, but I don't want to take it away from him, so. I'm sure he'll be in front of us shortly about that.
Thanks for keeping us all interested.
It's just a commercial. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor Pertim. Just announcing my virtual town hall tomorrow evening that both Councilwoman Smith and I were doing jointly. However, she will not be in town to do that and certainly respect her duties that she's called to do to, to help the refugees in Poland. But tomorrow night at 6:00, we're having a town hall on emergency preparedness in light of the Marshall Fire and thinking about these kind of disasters and how we can be better prepared in our homes. So I'll be having Fire Chief Mike Piper join us to talk about emergency preparedness in the home. And then also a nonprofit, United Policyholders, who will be sharing with us advice on looking at our homeowner insurance and making sure that we're well-prepared for that with these disasters. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor Pertim. I had the great fortune to attend the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference this past week in Washington, DC. Councilmember Smith was also there. We had some excellent meetings and some excellent learning sessions. I'd never seen a president speak before live, so that was very cool. And we also had some great meetings with Senator Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper, learned some of their priorities as well as opportunities for funding, namely around transportation, infrastructure, and other, well, there was an infrastructure bill, so other infrastructure-related items. So I look forward to working with our team. We've already got a couple of webinars set up, and we'll be able to hopefully bring some of those dollars here to Arvada for investment in our own community, and we're excited about that.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer, before I go to you, I just want to make sure if Mr. Marriott has anything.
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I just wanted to, you know, talking about emergency preparedness, and I, I don't know who's on the fire district board yet. You are? So before it's too late, I think Station 3 is going to be ribbon cutting, right, on April 2nd?
Yes, April 2nd.
At 10:00 AM?
10:00 AM, yes. And that is going to be at Kipling and 73rd.
Yes. And, and since I drive that way, I will have to say, my kids have not been to ribbon cutting. You guys that have been around a while, my kids are really little, now they're high schoolers. That's the next ribbon cutting they do want to go to, because they think that's a super cool firehouse with the, with the interior and the way it was built. So if anyone wants to join us, we'll see you on April 2nd at 10:00 AM.
Thank you.
And, apologies, that actually reminds me, at 9:00 AM on April 2nd, we'll be doing back-to-back duties. There is a licensing clinic hosted by Foothills Animal Shelter, going to be at Arvada High School in the parking lot. I will be there, and if you come, you'll get to meet my own dog, so.
And you'll get to meet my new puppy, who will be getting with the license.
Lots of stuff going on. Awesome. All right. Mr. Devon, do you have anything for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we will have a pretty busy workshop next Monday. We will give you an update on Old Town, also an update on our police department body-worn camera program, as well as more discussion about our water and sewer infrastructure, capacity needs, and a roadmap to address those, those concerns as we move forward. So pretty busy workshop next Monday.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Morris, anything from our council?
Nothing from me.
Thank you for your help tonight in clarifying those motions. And with that, we stand adjourned.